Ladies and gentlemen, members and guests, multimedia presentations, candidates. Good morning and welcome to another beautiful day in Port Angeles. And it is beautiful. Did you see the headlines last week? Chartered air service is returning to Port Angeles. Very good, very good from a business aspect. But many things are returning, and so is our political forum, because one of the candidates has returned to the race. As our members know, we do not hold forums after the debates are out, but after, after the ballots are out. Once the ballots are out, one of the candidates re-entered the race, and I feel that it's only fair for our membership to hear what they each have to say, because we know, as the city council goes and votes, so does the economic climate of our city. So with that in mind, let's quickly introduce our candidates and get right to the forum. First, we have Dan Bateman. Welcome.
Bateman, right?
Bateman.
Yep. And incumbent Sherri Kidd. Sherri, welcome. The same format as always. Five minutes for introductions, followed by two minutes to add-on or read, view whatever you'd like. We go questions by the members, and then we close with a two-minute closing. With that said, Sherri won the toss, so Sherri, five minutes.
So do I go to the podium?
Yes, please.
Or they can bring it to them. There's plenty of room.
Good morning, PABA.
Morning.
Well, what an honor to be here for my Port Angeles Business Association to address you as a candidate for your city council. It's been an honor to serve you, and it's an honor to address you as a candidate this year. I'm running for this office because I believe in Port Angeles. Good things are happening, and it takes a lot of work and teamwork to continue good things happening in Port Angeles. We all live here, we have our businesses here, we have our homes here, and we all want the best community possible. And that takes work, it takes volunteers, like we're going to honor the volunteers. And honestly, city council members are volunteers of your community too, because although they're paid a stipend, honestly, our hourly rate is miniscule. If you put in the work and do the time and serve the community, we're here to serve you, and that's what it's all about. And that's what I love about Port Angeles, being a part of the community, making it better. I have, I've run several months for the city council, and I ran in 2003, and I came within 100 votes of getting elected to the Port Angeles City Council. I blanked the town, I went door-to-door, and I said, wow, that was awesome. I can do this. So in 2005, I put up signs everywhere. I knocked on every door. I was out there working hard. And in 2005, I came within 50 votes of getting elected to the Port Angeles City Council. And I said, wow, this is awesome. I can do this. 2007, I left the county sign. My opponent was yelling, uncle, no more signs. I said, I got more going out. I can just, I, and I worked, and I got elected. And then once you get elected, you realize there's so much work to do. There is so much study, there's so much learnings. And my first challenge was, was the harbor works being thrust upon us as new, brand-new council members. There was a meeting, joint meeting with the port and the city council, but we didn't get our information until the last minute. And I, I said, why? I need my information. And I was told, well, we have to do it now, or you won't get in the governor's biennium. So I called Olympia to talk to the kid guy and say, is this, is this true, that we have to pass it tonight? Because I don't have time to study this. And he said, well, yes, we gotta get the information down and get the governor's biennium budget. Well, I, I got, I got really in trouble for asking a question. And I started getting pushback for asking questions. But I'm here to represent you, and doing homework and asking questions is my job. And I do my job, and I fight for the people. But after that was, was passed, then I wondered, well, how come the county, the port commissioners are so informed and were not? So I talked to the port commissioners, and they had the information a week ahead. But I was promised, I was, it was promised to me that if we pass this harbor works, not $1 of city money will go into this. Well, then they came back to us asking for money. And I said, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. So I voted no to funding the harbor works. So I had to start out, out of the gate, fighting for what I believe is right. But I have, so I have the initiative to work and study and do the right thing for the people of Port Angeles. But many good things are happening. I hope you have a chance to walk down to the waterfront and take a look at our beautiful new waterfront. That is a project that started back in 2008 when I first chaired the Port Angeles Harbor Committee. And we came up with a new task, and that's one of the advantages, is having a local girl on the city council, because my whole life, people have asked me, why don't we fix up our waterfront? Victoria is so beautiful. And we come home, and it's, it isn't. It was rundown. I can't, I don't have glasses on.
Thirty seconds.
Just tell me, okay. So we've worked on this, and it's important as an international host city that we have that. We have new businesses moving into Port Angeles. We can see good things are happening. But I fight to keep taxes down. I'm the only one that voted no on a 5.2% increase in your electric taxes for next year and the next year. And I found out since then, Social Security is zero next year. So I made the right move. But I'm working for you, I'm planning for you, I'm fighting for you. And thank you for the honor to serve under city.
Thank you, Sherri. Dan, please, five minutes.
And I'm Dan Bateman, and I'm running for city council. Thank you, PABA. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Bateman.
Speak up, please.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here and talk to you, answer questions. One of the concerns people had is that I had dropped out of the race temporarily. Yes, I was out for about a month. It was a hard decision. There was family issues, health issues. I've got those results in my bag. I'm not a practiced politician. I'm not a business owner, so I couldn't pretend that I have all the answers. I do have 20 years of leadership experience. This community, I've worked for years. War, almost down and out. Veterans advocate, health specialist, homeless veterans, very successfully. Have experience in pulling diverse groups, organizations, resources together for a common cause, for betterment for neighbors. I've worked tirelessly, head down. I'm not a business person, but we have smart people right here in this room and across this town. I've been out talking with business owners to find out what are the issues and concerns. We do have good things going on in this city. I studied about the new air service coming in in March. That's a good thing. For those that attend on the tourist end, the things down on the waterfront are great. We're talking with business leaders. Recently, I've found that there are a lot of issues. There's a bit of frustration, things that aren't getting done. We need more. Downtown, there's parking issues. Things aren't going well there. I'm hearing that there's a bit of a disconnect between business association, the downtown association, Chamber of Commerce, City Hall. I think we could pull things together, it'd be a little better. I'd like to be a part of this. We do have great things going here, but we do need more. I see we need a sense of community like we used to have. Things have gone downtown in that area, too. We used to have festivals downtown that bring people in to shopping. They have family outings for this, for creatives. Beaches are great, but we do need more. We need a city council that'll actually listen to folks. A big reason why I threw my hat in the ring last spring is I've noticed that the city council sometimes seems to be disconnected from the people. Businesses, new businesses try to start up, and they get frustrated so much right they can't get through it. And very soon, you see them fail. Citizens that can't pay their utility bills get their tax to the hill. Every year, 30% of people in this city are struggling. They need to get assistance, keep the lights on, keep the families warm. It shouldn't be that way. And I appreciate that lots of times the city will go after grants, outside money. I think we can do better, though. My approach on grant money, it's fine for as far as it goes, but I think we can take care of our own here just fine. Take monies that we've paid into, sure, so we get a piece of pie. But I think we got more pride than only go for grant money and then tax the people to the hill. We can do better. Again, I don't have all the answers, but we have very smart people in this city. One that would listen and help to the working people. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Sherri, you have two minutes. Would you like to add anything, please?
Yes, I do listen to the people, and that's why things are getting done. I participated in helping to bring our airlines here. I went and testified at the port commission for the commissioners of the port of Seattle to let them know we are a disadvantaged community. We do need an airlines here, and asked for them to give a waiver to an airlines that would come in to service our community and to waive the landing fees, the gate fees at C-TAC, which they've done. They've, they've waived that and not accelerated the opportunity to bring an airlines in here. We've had several airlines looking at us, and now we have one. But it was pulling together, it's doing the work. And we, grants are great. Our civic field lights, the civic field lights are so old, they don't make replacement parts anymore. And we were in danger of having to shut it down because we couldn't have night games. We got grants for that. That's money that we don't have to tax you for. I think that's amazing. And grants are important. As mayor, I stood up and said no to the Department of Ecology when they came back at us and wanted more unfunded mandates, wanted me to tax my citizens more, and I said, no. No, you don't understand. We're a town of 8,000 ratepayers, and we have a 42,000 CSO bill, and we just have, I said, I'm not going to do it anymore. And then, that's when they said, oh, well, you know, there's a $4 million grant available, and a $400,000 grant available. And now we're working with the Department of Ecology, and we're negotiating with them, because you had someone who listens to you and stands up for you and fights for you. I'm a volunteer in this community. I own a business. I've invested my money here, and I do understand budgets. And it's important as a business owner and someone who understands budgets and someone who really works to keep the cost down for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, anything to add?
Why don't we move the microphone over here so you guys don't have to get up every time.
Now that you're not tired.
Oh, my God. Thank you. I'm not against grants, but I believe this city has a lot of potential. We're just tapped into it. We have very smart people here. We have a lot of pride here. And I'm not against grants. I just don't like it when we have a budget that we're in debt until 2035, and we're hoping that the grants keep coming through. I don't run my household budget thinking, well, if I get 20 years for the debt, maybe somebody will bail me out later and depend on it. I do for myself. I believe this community has pride to work hard and make sure we have a balanced budget. And take care of our bills, take care of our people here. Again, I'm not against the grants, which is the right thing, but I think we can do better out having a budget where we're not required to hope that outside money comes in, and it always comes with strings attached. Or this place goes belly up. We can do better than that. I know we can. So I'll be looking at budgets, I'll be looking at outsourcing. We have so much outsourcing on contracts in this city. We have good people right here that would love to have some of those contracts, keep the money locally instead of going out of town and then hope more comes in, free money. That's what I meant. We can do better. We have the pride to do it. We have the ability to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to the fun part. Who has the first question? Over here, John. I treasure her.
Yes, I'd like each of you to comment on the urban growth area, and what are your views on incorporating any of these areas into the city in the future?
And Dan, we'll start with you in the urban growth area, how that relates to the city.
That's a good question. It's one I've got to study on. I don't have the answers. What I would do is be talking with all concerns, especially those areas that I'll be able to have to twine with the city if I understand the question correctly, talk with people there, the businesses, bring things together with best decision, all concerns. I'm sure you want more than answer for that, but I'm not going to just stand there and blow smoke with one I'd have to study on and get back with. Thank you.
Sherri, urban growth area.
Right, this has been a topic that's been around for years. And thanks to the Palm County Commissioners in the past, that they have helped us to put in new infrastructure out in the Eastern UGA to help spur growth there. And the city gets 50% of any new tax revenues that are created out in the Eastern UGA. That, that's as far as incorporating the urban. We have plans for the Eastern UGA and the Western UGA, but there are no current active plans to incorporate anything into the city at this time.
Very good. Next question. Mr. Feeley.
You both said something about this waterfront downtown, which has really come a long way. I know it'd be a victory, but like Ted Simpson, he was here before electricity, so.
He just had a birthday.
I got a lot of remember when stuff, and it looks great, but we got one issue down there. One of many, but one, it's a homeless. And it seem like they're coming more and more and more. And they're down there, and I stand there and watch people come off the ferry, and they got their signs, and they're intimidating, and they look like shit.
The question is, what's the role of the city in, in the home, as in panhandling?
Yeah.
Okay. Sherri.
Okay, I'm going to separate homeless and panhandling at this time, because I, before we were asked to debate, I was at, I was going to be on the program to talk about a panhandling ordinance that I'm working on with the city council and city staff. And I'll be bringing back a report in the next week or two and actually give a program on that with Chief of Police Terry Gallagher. But it's, it's important, I've been asked to address this issue. And Bob and I were on vacation in Honolulu, and we noticed last year that the downtown, those people in Honolulu, they used to be all over the place, and they were gone off the streets of the shopping area, business district. They were just gone. And we read when the city council passed a panhandling ordinance for public safety issues to keep them out of congested areas, the panhandlers, for the safety of everyone concerned. And so recently, it was in the news that Chehalis had just passed a panhandling ordinance similar to Centralia's. And so Chief Terry Gallagher and I went down and met with the mayors of both cities. It was in Centralia, they were very welcoming. They, the mayor, the city manager, the city attorney, the police chief, they were all there to tell us how they turned their town around and discouraged these people by having, creating a public safety zones where they can't congregate to panhandle. And so then Chehalis did the same thing, and those people chose to move elsewhere. They can, there are certain signalized intersections where, for safety reasons, it isn't allowed. And within 300 feet of those intersections, plus within full entering in their cars, 25 feet of a gas pump and/or ATMs. But they can go anywhere else in town and, and hold up their signs. And so they, they have chosen to voluntarily leave. And then they have a $250 fine for the first infraction. But the police go out and talk to each one individually and say, the city council just passed this ordinance, and we're no longer, you're no longer able to. Because in Honolulu, there was a judge that said, this is a sidewalk. It isn't a side seat. It isn't a side bed. It isn't a side camp. It's a sidewalk for the safety of the, of the public. So, so those people were given a warning. And in Chehalis, they've had the law for two years, and they have not given any tickets because the people voluntarily moved on. Excuse me, that was in Centralia and Chehalis. They, they've only had it since, since September, and they found it to be highly successful. So I'm working on that. I brought all that information back, and I'll be giving you a complete report on that. The homeless ceremony house, unfortunately, last spring, they, they had a downtown shelter, and then the people got up, were given their coffee and donuts, and told, you know, you need to leave, but don't come back tonight, we're shutting down. And they shut down abruptly. The Salvation Army tried to temporarily house up, but realized that wasn't their primary mission. And so now they've opened facilities up on 18th Street, but there needs, I believe there's, there's work in progress to get people transportation out to 18th Street. So there are two separate issues. I'm currently working on the panhandling issue, but I've been told by Centralia and Chehalis that if you work on one, it helps resolve the other two. So we're working on it, but thank you for your input.
Very good. And Dan, your thoughts on homeless and panhandling, what the city can do?
Yes, thank you. Sherri and Terry, information for the city about the panhandling, it is an issue downtown. Mostly, it's a safety issue, but it's also an issue for businesses down there. When somebody's outside the doors and harassing customers and intimidating, I think the right approach is being taken on that part of it. But as Sherri said, there are two parts to this. You have about a dozen or so hardcore panhandlers. That's just how they make their living. They're not all homeless. And then you have people that are really down and out that are homeless. This is an issue I'm very familiar with. For four years, I worked with it as a veterans advocate and housing specialist. I worked with property managers, landlords, different social service agencies, and helped find solutions. Helped house 273 veteran households, two-thirds of which were literally homeless. Some of them chronically so for years, living in tents with broken-down cars with the kids. They're now stabilized. Let's say 273, about half a dozen of those. No matter how many times I worked out of deal with the property manager landlords, had a good plan for success, they'd find some way to mess it up. And most of those just moved on. I could go into more detail if you wanted, but we're talking about the downtown issue with the panhandlers. It is an issue. Mostly, it's a safety issue. I think that's the biggest concern. When they're on the street corner, stopping traffic, that can cause accidents, people get hurt. At least be fixed. The panhandling law, I think, will fix this. For the homeless, the destitute, as I said, I know the players involved. I know some of those people that are downtown, the destitute. I know how to work with the agencies, the landlords, the property managers, deploy the resources, help these people get back on their feet, become stable, productive members of society. I've done this for a long time. So again, I appreciate what Sherri and Terry is doing with the city council and handling laws. I think this is going to make a big difference. But there's more than one safety issue, and as we continue to work on it, it'll get better. Thank you.
Next question.
Jay O. The city debt has ballooned to about $150 million in the last few years, and I just wonder if either of you have any big-ticket items that you want to try and create more debt in the next four years?
We'll start with Dan. How do you want to pile on?
No plans to create more debt. Absolutely not.
But kind of following on that, but there are big-ticket issues. Any ideas on how the city is going to handle all sorts of state mandated costs? Harbor cleanup, et cetera?
Continue working with the different players involved. The EPA, the Parks Department, the county, the city. We come together, we'll find good solutions and make this work. There's good progress being done. I'm sure Sherri will respond more on that, what has been done. I haven't been involved in city council meetings, but I've heard some of it. Should be able to probably speak a little bit further. But there is good work being done. I don't think all the cost should come on Port Angeles. We're not the only ones that have caused pollution. Some of the creeks coming down the hill, out into the harbor. There's been long-term problems with rain air in other states that need cleanup. I don't see why it should be a career for folks that manage those for 20 years and still waiting to get started. I would be working to speed up that process. As far as big-ticket items, it's going to run up more debt. I'd be looking to have to do it cost-efficient. The city can't really handle more debt. I talked about that earlier. If I handled my household budget to the point where I needed a handout, I might be one of the people down there and have stuff. Good things are happening. We need to all work together and do it smart with a balanced budget.
Sherri, are deficit, and are you going to add to it?
Absolutely not. I'm the one who voted no on the AMI project. That was our $5 million smart meter project, because it just didn't seem that smart to me. But I had, I argued against it, and I fought against it. I was outnumbered, but I consistently voted no. Now, because we, we have come out of that smelling like a rose, we didn't lose any money, because we were able to negotiate our way out of that and came out fine. But that, what's, we have new personnel at City Hall. We have a new director of finance with a very refreshing point of view, because when I first arrived at City Hall, we were told, for instance, with the AMI project, oh, we need to have this for the good of the city. It was a $5 million project, and I was told it's going to save us millions. And when I asked, and before vote on it, I asked Mr. Cudler, Mr. Cudler, can you specifically tell us how this is going to save the city taxpayers millions of dollars? His answer was, well, it's a cost avoidance. I don't know what that means to you. But it didn't resonate good feelings with me, and I voted no. Because what was happening at the time is every project was brought to us singularly, and we were not given the overall picture on our debt. We were given each project, we must have this, we must have this, we must have this. We now have a CFO who brought us the broad picture. This is the debt that has been accumulating from the past and growing from the past, and it's now on your shoulders, city council. And Mr. Bateman's correct, he has not been attending city council meetings, so he doesn't have specifics, because he hasn't been attending when he quit the campaign. He quit coming to meetings. And if you're not informed, how can you serve the people and how can you understand the issues? So no, I won't add big debt, because it's not the thing to do. But now we have the overall picture, and we can see the can's been kicked down the road and it's landing at our doorstep. And we have a set, a priority-setting plan that we did this year, which was difficult, but we are setting our priorities. We are reducing debt. We see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we're being very responsible as the council. And I'm working hard and studying hard to be very responsible for you, the taxpayers, but I don't add any more tax burden. Thank you.
And Dan, since your name was invoked and about the city council, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes. I missed two city council meetings. One of them, I got the day wrong. I showed up, and they weren't there, so I made it to the very next one. That's two. I've been trying to stay informed. I'm not up on everything that happened over the last eight years. I was busy working with homeless issues for Bets. So I'm playing a little bit of catch-up on that. I wouldn't have known, for instance, that Mr. Cudler was the one that was involved with smart meters. But I do remember when that issue came out, I didn't think it was a good idea. I'm glad that Sherri fought it. It was a bad idea. I do see a city council where they keep running up debt, and some of it is very necessary expenditures. Some of it I question. We have very good staff with, over at City Hall. Some of them are very. Some of them are very highly paid. What I question is, why do we do so much outsourcing when there's a job that needs to be done? We have good engineers. I still remember a little one like to say out here on the east side of town, "Welcome to Port Angeles, you got outsourced." We have businesses right here in town that would love that contract. We can be a little smarter with the budget. We're making progress. I'm still playing catch-up on a few of the old issues where they've kicked the can down the road. I don't believe in kicking the can down the road. So yes, I am going to city council meetings. I'm trying to get smart on the issues. I'm hoping to hear from local business people here, "What do you need from city council for a better business environment and to thrive?" As I said earlier, I've met a businessman. I've never owned a business, but I know how to listen, I know how to bring people together in the spirit of cooperation for the city. We can do better. Thank you.
Sherry, any desire to respond, especially why the council outsources so much work?
Because we have good consultants. We came out of the AMI project, $5 million project, we came out even for the taxpayers. We had to have good consultants for that. It was very important. We have a new harbor study. We have some good consultants already helping us on this. So our consultants are more than paying for themselves. We very carefully make these choices and they are more than paying for themselves in returns to the city. And so we make very wise choices in choosing consultants and we've made good choices. And because of that, our annual budget has not been increasing this year over the last...
Very good. Next question. Over here, yes.
Sherry, at the July 21st, 2015 council meeting, you moved to hear an advisory ballot vote in addition to public hearings. That motion carried 4 to 3. Then July 28th council meeting, you were seen standing and talking to the pro-fluoride doctors. At that meeting, you wanted to have the previous motion gone away. And after reviewing the video, after 10 minutes of the video, you stated that it was an illegal motion. However, attorney lawyer said there is nothing illegal with the previous motion. Your tone changed. You continued to make the same remarks that it was an illegal motion. I listened to the video and your reply was you wanted the advisory ballot to go away. Presently, what are your intentions?
So the questions of both candidates for that are, what are your intentions on the fluoride vote?
Yes.
And we start with Sherry.
Sure. We, the city council gave directions to staff to put it on an advisory vote. Now, advisory vote is all we're allowed to do by state law. That's all we're allowed to do with an advisory vote because this decision lands with the council. So we gave instructions to the staff on an advisory vote for the city and the PUD district. And the state auditor and this county prosecutor both came back and told our city attorney that they can't do that. That's, they can't do it that way. So, and I did correct myself, the word, it wasn't, they can't do it. So it's not legal to do it that way. So since it's not legal to do it the way we asked them, I use the term illegal, we said it wasn't illegal. Okay, that's just, so that was, it wasn't illegal, but it's not legal. So we had, so then we had a discussion on how else to do it and then we came out actually with a better system. So we did tell staff to do an advisory vote one way. It was rejected by the county auditor and the county prosecuting attorney. So I, my impression was that it was illegal. If that's not a correct word, it's just going to be done. So we came up with a better way to do it.
And do you have any initial thoughts, pro or against or for fluoride?
Well, we're in the process. We created a process of discussion and anyone who's not in the council can be free to give opinions, but I have to respect the process that we're going through. I have to, I'm required to listen and read and I want to be informed. So until we finish the process, I will respect the process and will make comments after we finish the process when I have a chance to hear from everyone and listen carefully to both sides. Thank you.
So Dan, the question is, first of all, in the process, how do you feel in that that the city's taking on fluoridation? And then do you yourself have any personal opinion on fluoridation?
Thank you. I appreciate this question. It's important to all of us. As for the process, I've noticed over the years that it's kind of confusing to see the city council work on this. Back in late 70s, there was a vote, so I don't know if I misunderstood something, but it's now illegal for the people to vote against fluoride. Port Angeles voted against it. The pro-fluoride proponents continue to fight for it over the years. Nine years ago, citizens here got together, petitioned, said, "We do not want fluoride in our water. We should have a choice." My understanding is the city council pretty much shut down that idea and we now have fluoride in our water whether we want it or not. Some people believe in it, think it's a great idea. Others of us believe it's a toxic hazardous waste. Fluoride that is put in our water is not the same type of fluoride you find out in nature. It's a toxic waste, industrial waste. Ingesting it does no good for your teeth. Fluoride, quite typically, will help prevent cavities to some extent. Ingested, it causes all kinds of problems. However, first the science of it goes, when I watched the folks at the city hall, they could debate the other night, it looks like the science can be debated pro and con until the cows come in. I don't think that's the real issue. City council, they have the right to make sure and the responsibility, make sure we have safe water to drink. I don't personally believe that they should be medicating us against our will. And they keep saying this fluoride that they're adding is toxic waste, it's a medicine. People should have a choice on whether to be a medicator or not. They should have some kind of control over how much they're being medicated. Some people drink more water than others. I like water. I don't like toxic waste in my water. So I'm glad there's an advisory ballot out. That's one way to, one more time, get the city council's attention. And I believe it's going to go the same way it has in the past, that people do not want it on the whole. It's about our rights not to have it forced upon us. As for the process, I'm glad there is a process. It's been a little confusing which way that's going, how that's working over the years because it seems to be all over the place, but I'm patient. I'm hoping it works its way through and hope in the end that the people's choice will be heard. Thank you.
Now we'll go to a question from a political consultant, Paul Yuron.
Mr. Bader, I have a question for you. You dropped out of the race at a point in time when it was too late to remove your name from the ballot, it was too late to remove your photo from voter's guide, and now you're back in the ricks. My question to you is, can you give me one good reason why I and others should vote for a person who can't seem to make up his mind if he wants to be a candidate?
I never doubted that I wanted to be involved as a candidate and member of the city council. I'm not one to just sit on the sidelines and hope everything works out for the best. I want to see the real issues. When I threw my hat in the ring, so to speak, back in May, that was on a Friday, the deadline for making sure it wouldn't be unballot was Monday, three days later. I didn't plan on dropping out of the race. As you see in the newspapers, it was personal reasons. I don't want to go into it in much detail. There were family issues and health issues that are now resolved. They need to be taken care of. We all have issues sometimes, they still come off as burdensies, unplanned for, unexpected that we have to deal with. I was out of the race for about a month. It was a very hard decision, but I'm back. I care about the people in this city. I'm not a quitter, as I've heard the word said. I served my country for 20 years in the military. I'm a combat vet and I survived it and all of my guys survived it. Quitters don't get through that alive.
And the broader question I heard is, why should people vote for you?
Again, I've been a resident of Port Angeles since 1999. I've had ties with this area since the 70s when I made a future bride then. I was off in the army 20 years too shy to ask, she waited till I retired and finally said yes and that I could have asked 20 years ago. I've raised a family here. I've seen good things happen here. I've lived in many places around the world, 20 years in the army. This has always been home. We have the best people, not only a great environment where we got mountain views and water, but the people here. I've never met friendlier people anywhere around the world where you count on your neighbors. Last few years, I've seen this city struggle. Businesses struggle, people struggle. I'm not one to sit on the sidelines and take action, get things done. It's had a temporary setback, but I can be counted on. I care about the people here and get the work done. Thank you.
Sherry, the broad question is commitment to the position and why someone should vote for you?
Well, this has been the most controversial, peculiar city council race I've ever seen. When you sign up for an elected office, you pay money, you fill out the application and you, you sign up, you have 10 days in which to withdraw because within that, after that 10 days, you are in county and state voter's guide. So we have two voter's guides. We have the county and state voter's guide and we have the Peninsula Daily News voter's guide. The Peninsula Daily News voter's guide says, "I'm unopposed." And people all over town say, "Why are you putting up signs? You're unopposed." Why are you having, you know, why are you campaigning? You're unopposed. I'm not unopposed if someone doesn't withdraw within the 10 days. We had a League of Women Voters debate at the Clallum Heritage Center and the candidates were there. Mr. Bader was in the back. He came and he sat in the back and didn't participate. Now, I was up there. I actually had to bring a letter from the county auditor saying that I was opposed because there was another candidate on the ballot, so I could participate in that. I'm out there, I'm campaigning because when someone is on the ballot, he's on the ballot, "Am I unopposed? No, clearly I'm not." But I've never seen anyone in a local race that's created the controversy of quitting a race and then, yes, and he has come to some city council meetings, but to get public comment and leave, not to hear and study the issues. And this is so important. You are electing people who have to understand the issues, who have to understand the budget, who have to do the work. This type of controversy, I've never seen in a city council race, but it isn't coming from me. I have run for this seat four times and in between, I have attended the council meetings and I've studied the budgets. I've got a closet full of budgets because I'm doing the work. You know me, you know who I am. I own a business, I'm working for Port Angeles and I don't have erratic behavior when it comes to serving the community. So I, I'm here as I always have been and I'm working and I'm campaigning because I want this job. Thank you.
And now, before we go to the closing statements, as always, you've got to appreciate any citizen who will go in front of the public and ask for your vote, put themselves in front of your questioning and serve us. So let's give both of the candidates. With that said, Dan, you have two minutes to give us your closing comments.
Again, thank you for your opportunity, opportunity to speak with you, to answer your questions. I left this city. I chose it to be my home. I wasn't born here, but I chose it many years ago. I care too much for, just to sit on the sidelines and hope everything works out. I take the chance to get things to work out. That's why I'm involved. I've been involved for years here, helping most out and out and working with different businesses, different organizations. I do go to city meetings, but I don't just show up, make a quick comment and exit. Usually the last one to leave that evening. It's a bit of a learning curve. I haven't been there for eight years, but I'm learning issues. I know how to listen. One of the things that I've advocated for, I have made those public comments at city hall, is that we need more public access. People need to be heard sometimes. For instance, go to the meetings, give an impassioned plea without a concern of theirs. Then I see nothing happening. For years, we've been paying for public access television, wave cable. It's something I advocated for, another way for people to have access to city hall, have their voices heard. I'm glad to see it's finally happening. Yeah, we'll, yeah, pop up, Port Angeles Public Access, they're going to be going live come January, I believe. I'm glad to see it finally happening. Thank you. I'm asking for your vote because I believe we need to do faces on city council. We need to work together. We can do better than what we've been seeing. There's some real issues going on. There's bits and starts. There's some really good things happening, but we need more. I want to work for the people of this city and help make those good things happen. Thank you.
Sherry, two minutes.
It's an honor to serve on your city council, but it's an honor to serve your community. Most candidates for city council, I served on boards and commissions first before they serve on the city council. I was on your planning commission. I was chair of your planning commission. When I first got on the city council, they wanted to shut down our William Shore Memorial Pool and I fought against it. Initially, I was the only council member was saying, "Not no, but heck no." And I fought against it and we have a successful pool. But that's because when you had somebody local, I learned to swim at the pool. I know how important it is for the community and I refused to have it shut down. It's thriving. I have, I've served in the community. I belong to civic clubs. I belong to Port Angeles Business Association. I belong to Port Angeles Chamber of Commerce. I'm involved in your community. I'm the past president of the Port Angeles Kiwanis Noon Club. I'm the president-elect of the Port Angeles Seroptimus Noon Club. I am the chair of the Community Service Awards Annual Event. And I work for this community because that's what I love doing. I put in the time, I put in the work, I put in the commitment and I don't just stand and say, "I'd like things to get better." I tell you how they're getting better, why they're getting better, how we're working on what we need to do. This is a great community. Vote for someone you know and trust. Vote for someone who does the work. Vote for someone who's out there in the community, making this a place that we want not only to work and live, but we want to invite others to join us. And I have, I'm the only, this is the Association of Washington Cities Magazine. Port Angeles, for the first time, got a lead article in there praising our waterfront because you had an active mayor who was working hard on behalf of you, the citizens of Port Angeles. I'd like to keep working for you because I love this and I'm going to keep doing it. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Sherry.
Andrew, next week. Andrew, you move, next week.
Um, next week, we're still working on getting that legislative announcement here. But I'm certainly going to be looking at fluoridation because we're having so much fun on debates. Let's not stop.
So Sunday in the PDM, we will have the announcement of who next.
Yes, and if you saw that, and to PDM's credit, they did a wonderful story, if you saw it yesterday. We had our announcement in on Friday. There's a little bit of a changeover, things going on there. But again, to PDM's credit, if you saw, we had an expanded announcement yesterday, making up for our missed one this Sunday.
Any other things that could be given in order? If not, have a great week, everyone. We'll see you next Tuesday with the sunrise.